Stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Edpers.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Present.
Anthony Debona.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Denise Russ. Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Moving on to public comment, if anyone would like to address the town council, please come forward and state your name and address.
David Overbaugh, 23 Ball Farm Road, Oakville.
If you could press the button that looks like a, there you go.
All right, there it is. Want me to say it again, or did you hear me?
Yes, please.
All right, David Overbaugh, 23 Ball Farm Road, Oakville, Connecticut. I wanted to talk about blight. I've been noticing around town lately a lot of blight, especially Oakville. You know, there was a couch that was on the side across from the Oakville Library for at least a year before it was recently moved. Cars down at the bottom across from the Oakville Post Office. Been sitting there, I don't even think they move at all. I'm not really sure why they're there. The end of Buckingham Street, down by Main Street, a lot of garbage and stuff flying around there, furniture outside. But anyways, so I had made a complaint about a neighbor. I called the blight officer, whatever it is, Nick, I think his name was, about 2019. And I made a complaint about a house on Hillside Avenue, which is, the backyard borders my backyard. The other day I saw Ken was down there looking at the property with Sealy's with Ray Antonucci. And, you know, he mentioned something to me about it. I go, yep, that's an old complaint. And I kind of dropped it to pick up a new fight with the whole Sealy fast food restaurant turning it into Waterbury. But anyways, I just want to say, in three years, 2019, nothing ever got done with it. They were supposed to clean up the property, never did, nobody ever followed up with them. And I'm just wondering, like, if you build this Sealy's, whatever's going to be down there, who's going to enforce the cleanup down there? If we're not enforcing it now on existing properties that were documented? That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Mangle, 240 Riverside Street, Oakville. I keep my yard immaculate. Three times I complained to a person in this room, I'm not mentioning no names, about 287 Riverside Street. The man that owns that house has a house up in Mount Fair Farms, a big fancy house. Because my neighbor got her, she got his address. And this guy don't even take, he rents the place, don't take care of nothing. So my other friend talked to him, and they put a fence up, and they took the logs away. It looks like garbage down there, year round. They gave them the ordinance. The ordinance in this town, because I had trouble before next to me, I live at 240, the house before me years ago, Officer Gravallis came down, told the man the ordinance, fine and dandy, everything's cleaned up. This here, I've been looking at garbage for three years almost, and I'm tired of it. This one house, 287, they must be lazy. They gave the ordinance, ordinances to be enforced. In Torrenton, Carbone, $500 fine if you leave it out for a week or more. That's how you could make money in this town. I'm tired of looking at the garbage. Then there's trees, and there's garbage out there flowing out of the trash cans a couple of times, town crew got to come and clean it up. Then the 300, they have two driveways. They got a garage that's like eight feet off the road, a two-car garage. That guy seems pretty smart, I think he's some different nationality. He has another driveway up on Highview. They exit Highview and all. They could put their trash cans up there, up there, they got a big parking lot. Why do I got to keep looking at this? Did somebody come to see you about this?
Maybe you should put a name on it, I don't get what you're talking about.
Madeline Rinaldi. Was, after she complained to you, they put a fence up, so you don't fall off the wall, I guess. And they cleaned some of the logs up, but the garbage is still there. Could we settle this thing tonight?
To the chair.
Please, I was going to say, please adjust the town council, not the town manager.
All right. Could you do something about this?
We'll look into it.
Thank you. Because I'm tired of looking at the garbage. You know, it's, it's, it looks like the Bowery of New York. Hope you could do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Catherine Camerow, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. Last meeting, I gave you a request for payment on a bill. It was not put into your correspondence, and it's not on your list of anything to approve. My guess is that the town attorney is saying, oh no, you can't do that, you would set precedent if you paid for a legal bill when somebody brings an action. I would agree with that in almost all circumstances, but the circumstance in this case is that the town didn't do anything. They reversed their decision. So it's not like it went through court and then the judge saw it and made a decision and, you know, who won, who lost. It's that the town didn't even do anything about it because it was a loser, because they couldn't defend it, because we were right. And as I said before, there is no reason for the townspeople to be monitoring any commission and having to bring an action with the court in order to resolve it. It should be done at the level of the commission itself or the council that oversees the commission. So we're going to pursue asking you to pay that bill, we're going to, we're going to have a petition, because it's not just the people that sued or that paid anything, it's people outside of that who feel it's, but it was, we were wronged by having to do what we had to do. The second thing I want to say is I'm glad to see the chief and the deputy chief here, but I don't think they're here, I don't know what, why they're here, they don't, they don't appear to be like at other meetings when we've had an officer in the back. I think an officer should be at all the meetings, because if you read the door as you come into this building, there's a notice about a violence-free area threatening free. Most times those kinds of postings are because something has happened, I don't know what, but it's uncomfortable. And if we have to worry about and post signs in our buildings about being violence-free, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had a police presence at every meeting, because it's intimidating to see that kind of sign. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Al Mickel, 95 Woodbine Avenue. I'm a great fan of public participation, I still am. It sounds like we can get it done, I just hope we will get it done. I'm here basically to support the library. I've used the library many times, and it's a place where knowledge is stored, and I've taken advantage of it several times. As a matter of fact, I financially support the library. I pay my late book fees on time. There was no duress, I do it willingly. The next thing on the, on the calendar here, at least the presentations, it's new business number B. Consider the establishment in charge of a building committee. We have a building committee, why are we building another building committee? They're all there, waiting to go, they have experience, I think they helped put this place together, so I would really encourage you to use the building committee that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Mangle, 240 Riverside Street. About Sealy's property, SLR has the, the one to do the traffic survey. They're a big engineering firm, they do with a drone, or they do it by vision, and they have for that. If you put two drive-throughs down there, I've been talking to these people, very good people, if you put two drive-throughs and you create a lot of traffic and they say it's okay, they're going to get sued. Because we're not playing no games. You got to realize, you got enough of traffic now, you can't take care of the roads now, you want all these cars coming? That'd be the biggest mistake this town ever made to put that through. Biggest mistake you ever made. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 21st, 2023.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Obstentions? Motion passes?
Chairman's report, in your packet is the letter from Rich Vaughn regarding the Bicentennial Gazebo Committee. I mentioned it briefly at our last meeting, but I don't believe it was in the packet, so you have a copy for this week. We also received a resignation letter from Christopher Martin as a member of the Parking Recreation Commission. That was dated February 22nd, 2023. Town manager?
Yeah, turn off some of your mic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. I have a very brief town manager's report. I'd just like to remind you of the Watertown Police Department partnered with the Center of Police Equity in 2019. They've conducted some analysis of the police department's interaction with our community, and they're going to present those results at the Police Commission meeting on Wednesday, March 8th at 7:00 PM. You're all invited to show to find out what the presentation is all about. And that's it for my presentation.
Thank you. Moving on to subcommittee reports, I guess we'll start with finance.
The first report is from the library, Watertown Library. Mr. Flaherty.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the town council.
Do you have a microphone for there?
Shall I go back down there?
Oh, there might be, she might have one for you if you'd like it.
I make a lot more sense when people can't hear me.
It's good to be with you all. To present the library budget request for Watertown Library Association, joined by fellow members of the Board of Trustees that I serve with, Christian Kurlis, Anne Fitzgerald, Betsy O'Connell, who's a company fiver, her husband Bill, and of course, our director, Joan Rintelman. And thank you, Mr. Mickel, for the shot in the arm. I think I've said it at these meetings before, books build minds, people build libraries, and the people, generations in this town have helped build the Watertown Library, the main library in the Oakville branch. And at any given day, we serve as a school, as a library, a senior center, a community center, all at once, whether it's through our programs, through our collections, through meeting spaces that are now finally coming to life. And a virtually unlimited collection, not just the books and the periodicals that are in the four walls, but those that are, that are outside and available online. Over the last few years, we've devoted about 2,000 square feet of new and repurposed meeting and rent space to the town, including the Woodward atrium, and of course, the fantastic Book Nook, which is in the basement at the Oakville branch. If you look over the past year, we've served 11,000, just over 11,000 registered borrowers, which is a slight increase over 2021. 21 was a bit of a dip due to COVID and other things, and we're starting to see not just people come back, but our service hours coming back. Both the main library and the branch devote 53 hours each week to the people of Watertown and Oakville and our patrons that, that come in. The main library being open on Saturdays, mostly during the school year as well. And what we'll do is tailor and do our best to devote the hours to the demand, the peak demand when people are coming in. We also increased our program. We've, we've had so far fiscal year-to-date 37 programs offered at the library. I always love this statistic, 46% of our town residents have a library card, and that's, we're beating the state average. 45% is considered excellent, so pat yourselves on the back if you've got a library card in your wallet, and if you need to get it renewed, pop on down to the library. This is a great relationship and a great partnership that those of us on the Board of Trustees have had the opportunity to work on with you over the years. And we do our best to be an incredibly careful steward of the resources that are devoted in the town budget to us every year. And this is also a nice, I guess, thumbnail, if you look at the library appropriations per capita, statewide average is about $50.63. We're down at 35.55, but we're pretty much in the pack of a lot of the other libraries in the towns surrounding Oakville and Watertown. Again, the town, as you well know, is, your town appropriation funds our ongoing services, our books, newspapers, magazines, DVDs, access to online information, and staff wages and benefits. The library is responsible for all the capital projects, and mostly, and almost solely because of the good people, Mr. Mickel, yourself, who contributes to the library, but the foundations and so many of the other individuals and organizations, especially the friends of the Watertown Library, that help fund our capital projects. And over the last 10 years, that's been over a million dollars, including the Woodward atrium and the Book Nook down in Oakville. We've updated our Wi-Fi, we've made water drainage improvements, new HVAC and energy-efficient lighting at the main library. Below the line in 2022, I was wrong, that $30,000, the $33,000 state grant actually was in fiscal, I think, 2020. So I apologize for that. But anyway, we, this is, these are the things that we try to do in working with partners and benefactors to, to, to help build the books and the bricks and mortar of our library. We, again, I believe, have been a very careful steward of public resources. If you go over the last 10 years, we've grown at 6.5% overall. That's under, that's about 0.65% a year average. And here's where I'm glad, my math teachers aren't here anymore, but I think I did make a mistake. Our request for $825,000 is actually in Joan's document that I think you have in front of you in the spreadsheet, 3.8% over last year. Must have rounded up, it was probably a bad habit I got when I used to work up in state capital. And we're looking, we're charging into this year with renewed energy and an anchor and looking forward to help anchor the renewal that you're all talking about, so many other boards of commissions, about the exciting things that are coming to Main Street in Watertown, and in seeing more and more people coming into the Book Nook and coming into the Oakville branch library, which is a very special place in my heart. And we appreciate the opportunity. I know you rescheduled us, and that was my fault, but thank you for being flexible in that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got, chase down answers we don't have, and for the real tough questions, hide behind Joan. And, and we thank you. You've got a lot of hard work to do, and we appreciate what you do for our town.
Thank you. Is there any questions, comments?
Well, last year you had the problem with the atrium, was it rough there, is that all done correctly?
Finally, yes. The roof is finally fixed, so they hand, further people, handicap access, there's, the punch list is much smaller than it was. Thankfully.
Anyone else?
I have a quick one. What's the fiscal fee?
Fiscal fee, lawyer, professional fee, people that are retired outside of staff and probably people for.
They're not picking that up on them.
They need to pick that up, right?
The accounting, the new, the lawyer, accounting service, outside 5,500, are, are to ensure that it's legal.
Legal and other professional fees, we actually, we did some work with, had some legal fees go up in the, in the past year through things chasing down with the roof, but also rewriting some bylaws and some other very smart, wise advice that we get. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members.
Our next budget is planning and zoning.
Do you have a page number for that? Mark or Sue, do we have a page number?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members. Mark Masood, Administrator for Land Use and Building Services. Just a brief introduction, of course, you basically know what, what we do, but the land use department is made up of five interrelated departments, Building Services Department, Planning and Zoning Office, the Planning and Zoning Commission, Conservation Commission, the Inland Wetlands Agency, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Historic District Commission. We have five full-time employees, we have one shared employee, that's the assistant building official who's shared part-time with the, halftime with the town of Thomaston. And we've had two interns that have helped with our workload as well. Unfortunately, both of them have moved, moved on. They've done an excellent job for them, they've learned well, but they, they have moved on. For departmental highlights, a significant improvement has been online permits. The Building Services E-Permit System is, has been online and receives at least 60% of its applications through the web portal, which eases the burden of in-person applications. We expect that to go up when the, when the land use, corresponding land use zoning permits are online, I'll get to that in a sec. Building staff also now utilizes mobile devices, iPads, to process applications and inspections real-time in the, in the field, making for greater efficiencies both for their time and for the clients, for the customers. Zoning permits and applications are issued through the E-Permit System, but they're not currently online yet. That's our next goal, is to have an online acceptance of zoning applications to create a more seamless process between the zoning and building permits. And we would expect that number that we mentioned for the building permits to, to go up when that, when that happens. After that, we would institute online processing and application for Planning and Zoning Commission, the other agencies that, that we deal with. Another major area is zoning revisions. We have, we've been involved in a lot of different activities. We have recently instituted a new model regulation for planned development districts. What that will do is to allow folks that have unique properties, and the Sealy property is the property that kind of instituted this whole conversation. With the, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, a planned development district would allow for unique properties to be developed within its own unique set of zoning circumstances that will better help to address, again, the characteristics of any, of any particular site. So we've just recently adopted model guidelines that will help guide such applications in the future. We've also used that to help to model a bit the Sealy application, so those two processes have been going forward kind of hand in hand. As you well know, a big, a big topic over the past year or two is affordable and alternative housing. The commission has recently revised its regulations with regards to bed and breakfasts. We had last year opted out of state guidelines for accessory dwelling units with the hope, with a plan, I should say, of reinstituting them more in line with the individual characteristics of Watertown, so the commission will take that up in the next month or so and revise those, revise those guidelines. Age-restricted housing certainly is a big issue in our community as well as others. We hope to, to address, to address that. And multifamily dwellings, while most municipalities are, are of single-family dwelling, they're single-family dwelling oriented, there is an opportunity, and we've seen this through the review of the zoning regs, there is an opportunity to encourage some multifamily dwelling in more intensively developed zones and to make those more available to, to folks that may need to, both older and younger folks who are looking to come into town or to downsize their properties. The zoning revisions are carrying on. As you know, as uses, zoning standards affect town growth and development in innumerable ways. They, they, they control uses in business and industrial zones, certainly as well as residential zones. There was a self-storage facility that's just recently approved and will be under construction on the bottom of Echo Lake Road. They had to, adjacent to the entrance to, to Route 8, they had to go through a several month process to revise regulations and, and to get that approved. It took, it took a long time, and that's kind of typical sometimes of developmental activities, even for those that are desirable in town. It controls ground-level uses there, when you see, when there's vacant buildings that aren't readily filled, a lot of the times that's because zoning regulations and uses don't specifically fit that category or are allowed in that zone, so we have to, you know, kind of rejigger the zoning regulations or to see how we can make those uses fit. Again, it takes a lot of time to, to do that. It affects things, and you've certainly, again, heard these, particularly with the Sealy application, the use of drive-throughs, the even mundane things, the keeping of pets and livestock. As I mentioned, it affects the permitting system, the permitting, the permit processing, it could be a longer versus a shorter, a shorter duration. We like to try to keep it as short as possible. It affects home-based business, and there's a myriad of conflicting standards that we've identified that drive numerous variance requests for the Zoning Board of Appeals that, again, are a time, time-consuming process for individuals. This is just a brief glance as to what This is just a brief glance as to what the new zoning regulations could look like. It's more user-friendly, it's more, it's color-coordinated. Folks will be able to look at the zoning regulations and to determine right off the bat, you know, what it is that they need to do and what sections they need to, to go to. In terms of a budget synopsis, the projected revenue for the Building Services is, is Projected revenue for the land use for all of the commissions is $73,500. The total expenses for Building Services and Land Use is $539,671. As you can see, and it's, we've known all along, Building Services is a, is a great driver of, of revenue and helps to, helps to keep the whole land use department flowing. We propose to, it's been proposed that we do a cost share, and we're certainly in agreement with an, with the Engineering Department, to replace an outdated plotter. We use that on a fairly regular basis. We've combined office supply accounts from the various commissions, who all have their various accounts. We've combined them for greater efficiencies, and other than salary adjustments and cost share, and the cost share above, the budget requests are the same as the last fiscal year. Our goals for next year is implementation, continued implementation of Watertown's vision for itself, which is embodied in the Plan of Conservation and Development, to continue to streamline the land use regulatory process, to make it easier for clients to, to obtain their permits, to fully implement the online E-Permit System, to integrate, as mentioned, the building and planning systems for ease of use, to complete revision and edits to the zoning regulations, and all, all of that, hopefully, to increase the value of the grand list. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I just had a question about the bed and breakfast regulations, and knew that that was something that you were working on, so is it possible to get a summary of what those new regulations are?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite...
You mentioned that, that one of the things that, that the Planning and Zoning was working on was bed and breakfast regulations.
Right.
And I was just wondering if you could provide a summary of the new regulations.
Yes, so the previous, they were allowed by, they're allowed in all residential zones. They were allowed by special permit, which, again, was that longer, that longer public, public hearing process. The Commission took a look at the regs and wanted to, actually, and there wasn't really much in the regulations to, to go by in terms of guides, so we did a lot of research and we did a couple of things where we've implemented new, new standards that, that better lay out and control the, the use of bed and breakfast, and correspondingly dropped it from a special permit to more of an administrative use so that they could be implemented on an easier basis, and then implemented with some stronger, some stronger standards.
Thank you.
No one else?
Just quickly, to revise the regulations, is there an additional cost, software cost, or is that something you're doing in-house?
We're not doing it in-house. We're doing it, well, partially, we're doing it in-house, with certainly the zoning subcommittee is, is assisting, but we're using the, a land use consultant who is guiding our, who's guiding our process.
That's, and that's reflected in the software line item?
Uh, no, the software line item is for municity for the E-Permit System.
Okay.
It's reflected in the consultant, the consultant line item.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is the Zoning Board of Appeals. Did you have anything you wanted? I think pretty much covered that.
Yes.
That's a $3,900 budget. Conservation. Which is page 13.
I'm sorry, I, I blew through everything and figuring I had covered it all in one fell swoop. My apologies.
I think, I think he has, yeah. I think you, I think you've covered it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That conservation budget was $47.50, and the building inspector, one, I think we've covered that also. Building inspectors, page 16. The Historic District Commission is the next one.
Can you get the Historic District as well?
That's part of my bailiwick as well.
It's what page?
Forty-nine.
All right.
Also, a very small one.
They have a very small budget that they operate on, and they, of course, only meet when there's a, when there's a Historic District, physical changes in the, in the works, and they apply to the Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My quick question is the consultant, where is that located? Is that in, which bu, which budget is that in?
Planning and zoning.
That's in Planning and Zoning?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the last budget item is the debt service.
Yes, debt service, page 51, everyone in the book. The debt service is actually structured by our financial advisor, Barry Bernarby. This is a listing of all our current outstanding debts, bonds and bands. If you would see at the very last item, I did add an additional $80,000 in for the bonding that's going to be coming up in the next couple of months. It would be for all the fees, attorney and for the finance advisor. I'm happy to take any questions. It's pretty straightforward.
And the bonding you just mentioned, that's related to the school projects in that...
Correct. It's the first round of bonding that we'll be doing.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, we have a presentation from the Economic Development.
The one with the...
That push button? I'm on, all right. Hi, my name's Joe Secrist, the Economic Development Coordinator for the town, and most of you don't know this man, but this is Joe McGrail, who's the Chairman of the Economic Development Commission. What we wanted to do tonight, the Economic Development Commission is kind of a behind-the-scenes effort, and it's a very long-term process between getting someone to come to town and actually getting them here. Over the 17 years, this process has been imposed. We've added about $85 million to the grand list, so there have been a lot of businesses that have come into town, and obviously, if you're, if you're interested, I can provide you with a list of those. What we wanted to do tonight is feature some videos that we have taken for the town. We have an agreement with a company called CGI in Rochester, New York. Part of their agreement with us and with some other towns is if we will put them on our website, they will finance all new videos for the town. So, the videos you're going to see tonight, there will be seven of...
Welcome to the Town of Watertown. I want to thank you for stopping by.
I guess we're going to see them now. There are going to be seven of these videos. One will be a welcome, two is on quality of life, three is parks and rec, four is public safety, economic development, and the Village of Oakville. Those are the seven. In total, they'll take about five minutes. They're very brief. What happens is each of those segments allows an advertiser to advertise around them on our website, and I'm very pleased to report that they've only been out now for about three weeks, and we've had some advertisers already bought. What they do is they, they, they make a deal with CGI, and CGI does videos for them and links them. When you go to one of these videos, you can go to their link and the, the sponsors. So far, we've had, the Brothers Tree Service has, has bought advertising. Taft School has a wonderful, just a wonderful video when you click on Public Safety and Quality of Life, Taft School. If you, if you want to click, find out more about quality of life, you just click up to the Taft School icon, and it will take you to them. The Lux Health, which is, I was not familiar with them. It's, it's a, it's a new pediatrician in town that specializes in weight and weight control, but they have taken an advertisement. When we get to the public safety part, there are links on there for the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, the Watertown History Museum, which CGI gave those at no charge to the, to the community organizations. And then there's another on there called Perfect Imperfections, which is a, a company that deals with rescuing special needs dogs, so. Well, you won't see any of those ads tonight. The version I'm bringing you tonight is just all of the, all of the videos. So, did you bring any popcorn?
Nope.
We're going to see movies without popcorn tonight, so we can run now if you'd like to. Who's that? Oh, I know that guy.
Hello, welcome to the Town of Watertown. I want to thank you for stopping by and hope that you enjoy our new videos showcasing Watertown. Incorporated in 1780, Watertown, Oakville, lying in Lynchfield County, with over 30 square miles of residential areas, farmlands, recreational areas and industrial sites. Residents benefit from a complete transportation network, land to expand their companies, and overall, the support of the business community. People who love the outdoors can choose from numerous things to visit and do year-round. Our community has several outstanding town parks, as well as Black Rock State Park. Also, there's lots of great stores and restaurants in the area to experience and a wide range of community events. All of these benefits, along with great educational options for children, friendly neighbors, and much more, make Watertown an excellent place to settle down and enjoy life.
That's the welcome section. Next one is quality of life.
Experience all that Watertown, Connecticut has to offer. Whether parents desire a public or private education for their children, they've come to the right place. We're home to Watertown Public Schools, the historic Taft School, and more. Discover robust curriculums and experienced teachers and committed...
That's inside John Trump.
... to learn and grow. For goods and services, if you need necessities, or if you're looking for a fun night out in the town, shop in the bustling downtowns of Watertown and Oakville. Afterward, enjoy a meal at one of our renowned restaurants. If you love spending your weekends outside, our area has a wealth of parks and facilities for activities ranging from hiking to basketball to golf. Live, play, grow in Watertown, Connecticut.
The next one is parks and rec.
Watertown's a place for both relaxation and adventure. If you gravitate to hiking, snowshoeing, or cross-country skiing, explore a diverse variety of trails in the region for year-round fun. Turn hot summer days into great memories with swimming and laps at Black Rock Beach. Also, check out the pool at Westbrook Park to keep the fun going. Parks and facilities in our area like Echo Lake Park and the Veterans Memorial Green in Oakville allow people to enjoy basketball, baseball, soccer, and so much more. Love to golf? Discover two beautiful courses, one public and one private, for people that have memorable rounds and develop their games. Here in Watertown, we're deeply humbled that Veterans Memorial Park, which honors people who serve, learn about important history. Afterward, for those with young children, take them to the Don Honk's Run Playground, where they can meet new pals and get some energy out. Come explore Watertown today.
The next one is public safety.
Situated at the intersection of two major highways, including Interstate 84 and State Route 8, Watertown has a hub for manufacturing and other economic activity. Discover lots of available properties for commercial and industrial growth. Explore our business parks here, home to a large number of different manufacturing companies. Pursue your goals with greater ease, the help of deeply supportive organizations like the Watertown Economic Development Commission and the Connecticut State Department of Economic and Community Development. These and many other resources, examples of support are waiting for you to explore.
Watertown, Oakville has been a community that we've been a part of all of our lives. We are so proud and grateful for the support that we receive operating our business. Watertown, Oakville is just a great community to be a part of, and we're honored to be here.
Work and thrive in Watertown, Connecticut.
That was the, I had the wrong section. Next is public safety.
A safe community allows its residents to live and enjoy their lives. That's why in Watertown, our town staff and professionals dedicate to public safety and helping residents whenever they can.
Our whole volunteer fire department serves as 1884, uses state-of-the-art equipment to provide firefighting and emergency services to the citizens of Watertown, Oakville, and those that pass through daily.
Public safety is our top priority, and we take this job very seriously. The Watertown Police Department has a long history of providing exceptional police service. We will continue to serve in the future.
Student safety and excellent education is our top priority. Working with our police and fire departments, along with our entire community, ensures maximum public safety protection.
Dedicated to safety, for current residents and visitors, and our future generations to come, in Watertown, Connecticut.
And the last one is the Village of Oakville.
Hostile and full of charm, the Village of Oakville, a section of Watertown, is a quaint hometown with a big heart. A historic ambiance still wingers through the village streets, but its 19th century buildings and factories are being expanded and renovated to breathe new life into this growing community. A proud part of Watertown, personality all its own, Oakville features quality amenities and unique opportunities for all ages. Shops and restaurants depth the village streets, creating the perfect mix of food and fun. Relax and reflect the Oakville village green. Visit the Veterans Memorial or catch a game at Moss Grove Field. Through civic pride and determination, the area has grown rapidly and continues to contribute a great deal to the development of the entire Watertown community. Discover the Village of Oakville today.
Well, those are the, those are the various vignettes. Oh, I'm sorry, there's another one.
... allows its residents to live and enjoy their lives. That's why in Watertown, our town staff and professionals dedicate to public safety and helping residents whenever they can. Dedicated to safety, for current residents and visitors, and our future generations to come, in Watertown, Connecticut.
And that, we allowed them to put a plug at the end so that they could get some business from it. What happened is they, we got complete editorial control, so I spent two days with a professional camera crew driving around town, helping, well, we did decide, the town decided which of those, which of those views they would make. So, they're on our website now. If you want to go, they're separated on the website in the six, seven distinct, and if you know anybody who would like to advertise in it, that's fine. We also will make this, the video you just saw, available. I have the link for that, and when companies are interested in coming to Watertown, that we can send them that link, and they can get all the information they want. And I think, without gilding the lily very much, I think it really says, makes me, I've been here 32 years, and it makes me proud to, to be here. Have any questions?
Thank you very much. Very nice. Any questions, comments?
Now, like I say, if a company wants to come in, a certain business, are they able to go into the site somewhere to find out what, if there's any vacant buildings around and see what's available to, you know, fit their needs? and see what's available, to, you know, fit their needs or whatever?
Well, that, that comes off, off their other sites, Gary.
Oh, the other sites?
Yeah, so we could, we have stuff on our website, but also at the state level. There's a lot of the real estate available in Watertown is posted there, so we can drive people to various sites to see what's available for them.
Yeah, on our website, there is a, a section called Commercial, Available Commercial and Industrial Properties, and it lists probably 30 or 40 available properties. And the, and the listing broker, so if they want more details, they can get that.
I mean, just one thing, Joe, Joe, like you said, he did a lot of work, a lot of legwork with us. We were told that in most towns, they come, they visit either the town manager, the mayor, the economic development office, and they just get turned loose. And they, they go around and they pick and choose whatever they want. Joe, you know, took them, handheld them through the whole process, and we were able to show exactly what we want to show in Watertown. And so I think by doing that, we've really come up with a quality product here.
Very nice.
Wonderful job.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Item B. I make a motion to approve the resolution for the establishment and designation of the charge for the building committee for the Board of Education, capital projects approved at referendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? In summary, it's taking the public billings committee and adding superintendent of schools and vice chair of Watertown Town Council as voting members, and then also having the Board of Education Facilities Director and the town purchasing agent slash billing supervisor as non-voting members. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $5,911.08 for police overtime. The funds have been reimbursed by the Drug Enforcement Administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to set a public hearing to be held on Monday, March 20, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the town council chambers, to hear public comment on the proposed amendment to the Watertown Code of Ordinances, Section 26-4, illicit discharge and storm water connections.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve the transfer of responsibilities and administration of the renters rebate program from the assessor's office to the social security depart, social services department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
I move to approve a bid waiver for the use of the Town of Watertown bid for chip sealing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jerry, would you be able to give us a little summary on why, do you want to go with the bid waiver?
Someone turn off the mic, please. There you go. Good evening. Jerry Lukowski, Director of Public Works. We did brief the subcommittee on this contract, and basically, it helps us get, get in place for this spring to put down a chip seal, also known as a chipstone. We plan to do nine miles of road. Previous years, we did have a couple of different contractors. Dash King, they're from New Jersey, and they're at $3.20 a square yard. This current contract is $2.75 a square yard. Dash King, King came in two years ago. The other contractor that we had was Gorm, and they're from Albany, New York. There's no current contractors in Watertown that do this type of work. The company Seymour Seal Coating from Wallingford, Connecticut. They do have residents from town that actually work for them, and also the surrounding towns. This is an acquisition process that's standard for some of the towns, is to use other town bids, also GSA contracts, state contracts, and also the COG contracts. We used one recently for Blizzard Wizard Saw. That comes out of the New Haven Terminal, and basically, we saved $6.89 a ton. For the thousand tons that we buy, it was a $7,000 yearly savings by using another contract from the Capitol Region Council of Governments. With this, the, the other major items of our road pavement program, mill and pave, we're going to put out the bid. Full-depth reconstruction, we're going to put out the bid. And between those two, it's 10 miles worth of road that we want to do from the bonding package. Chip sealing, it's a specialized truck for the mixture of the emulsion that they put on the road, as well as the distribution boxes for that. And it's not a paving operation, so they can't use paving equipment. So basically, that's the reasons why I'm looking to use this contract. It's a, it's a valid contract, it's current, it has a great price. I wouldn't bring you something that was more expensive, something like that, definitely want to put out the bid. We're focused on the spring, because it's also going to add four to seven years' worth of life to our good and fair roads, so we could have them, hold them place as we get to the larger roads that need more work to them. The reason for the spring is you want the road temperatures to be cooler. In the middle of the summer, you can't do this process, because the road heats up to about 130, 140 degrees, the actual road temperature, and it won't set right with the, with the chip seal.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion?
Just one.
Yep.
Any cover page you wrote, if we go with this company, this is a five-year contract, so...
It's a five-year contract, but we don't have to use it for the other four years. I could come back each year, if you want me to come back each year for this, as we watch the prices for this type of work.
Thank you.
So they're locking in that price for five years? Is that accurate?
They have a single-year contract for one-year extensions or a five-year contract.
Okay, so the price could change after year one?
For this, it's, it's locked in for those five years.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes? Thank you. Yep, thank you.
I make a motion to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $8,550 for the cost of the road safety audit traffic study.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $5,515 for reimbursement to the police department maintenance agreement line item for the purchase of, for Senate software.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
Make a motion, we move into executive session for town council members, town manager, and the town attorney, Jessel, relative to pending litigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes? Let's go back there. We shall return.
Recording stopped.